Ding ding, should we begin?
Yeah.
Five thirty? See if we can get out of here by five forty, maybe? All right, let's call to order this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for August. Anybody wish to make a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes for August eighteenth.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that's approved. Moving on to case number RZ two zero two one dash zero one four. Applicant Joe Soto is requesting a rezone of the remaining portion of property located at six forty-five McCart, parcel R three three two five eight of Shepherd and Collins, block ten, lot seven, of the city of Stevieville, Eureth County, Texas, from industrial to multifamily. Steve?
Yes ma'am, Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is a kind of an administrative cleanup for this particular project. This was first presented to P and Z in 2017 for a rezone, and it was two or three years later when they came back with the replat. And when the replat was presented, we connected it to the previously rezoned case and overlooked a combination of part of the parcel that they were replating, which brought in twenty-seven feet of the property to the north, which was still zoned industrial. And so when we approved the replat as a minor replat, we created a split zone piece of property at six forty-five McCart. So what we're asking tonight is that the commission consider this change to allow the six forty-five McCart parcel to become all R three and therefore eliminate the split zoning. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? All right, let's go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody who here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezone? Anybody who wishes to speak against? All right, we'll close this public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion so we can discuss.
I move, I move for approval of RZ twenty twenty-one dash zero one four, where that we recommend a council approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Do we need any discussion? All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezone request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that goes forward to council. Now we're up to changes to zoning regulations to allow for sale of alcohol. Steve?
Yes ma'am. This is relating to alcohol sales in the different zoning districts across the city. Currently, the permitted uses for alcohol sales are very specific, and they're for grocery stores, convenience stores. And so without those specific uses, we don't have alcohol sales as a permitted use in any district unless it's connected to those type of operations. And so with anticipated elections upcoming and potential ballot items, we were looking at this to see if we could possibly consider adding alcohol sales to districts B one, B two, and B three, as well as the downtown districts. And this would allow alcohol sales for the permitted uses within those districts. We've had a couple of requests in the past few months where people have been interested in having a store that sells exclusively wine or exclusively beer, and we haven't been able to entertain those because of the way the permitted uses are listed. So in your table or in your packet, we have included a draft ordinance. It's very simple in format. It's basically you're saying that we will add alcohol as a permitted use to B one, B two, B three, and downtown districts. And then also included in your packet is, you may recall, the spreadsheet of permitted uses, and every time I upload it, it does this crazy thing. But if you scroll all the way down to page thirty-five on that, this is basically a table format of all the permitted uses across all zoning districts that are commercial. And if you follow the alphabetized list, you can see that there's nothing related to alcohol unless you get down to those specific uses. For example, as mentioned, restaurants with alcohol sales would be one, grocery stores with alcohol sales, and then of course convenience stores. So this was before the commission on, I believe, August third, and the committee, the Development Services Committee recommended by unanimous vote that we consider approving this for B one, B two, B three, D two, and downtown, and staff would support a favorable recommendation. Back to council. With that, I'd answer any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for Steve?
Is there a limit as to percentage of alcohol in the drink? Anywhere in this? I don't see it.
No sir, not, not in this draft.
So if they want to sell Everclear, they're cool to do it?
Yeah, we, nothing in this ordinance to regulate the drink content. I'm not aware of anything, any other ordinance similar in other cities that would regulate that as well. The alcohol content of a drink served at a bar, I believe, is what we're asking.
Yeah.
And this is for really to purchase onsite and then bring to a, to your home.
It's for off-premises consumption.
Yeah.
Like a liquor store.
I thought this was alcohol by the bottle or alcohol by the glass. I thought that's what this was for.
Not necessarily, no sir, but it's a valid point that you're making.
Would they be able to?
Alcohol by the glass.
Typically, what you're talking about is regulated by Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission to the type of license and the regulations that pertain with the license that an individual establishment receives from the state.
Yeah, but we-
Off-premise, on-premise, contents of alcohol and beverages, all those things are regulated at the state level.
But we have, don't we have local option on those? I mean, we have dry counties, we have wet counties in this state. I mean, that, that says to me that we've got local option.
It's typically over the allowance of the sale of alcohol, not the amount of alcohol within an individual drink. Again, those are, those are things that are regulated through your licensure. The city more controls whether you have the ability to sell it or not sell it, not is it six percent or five percent?
Okay, got you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sir.
No problem.
Within the zoning, I should have done a little more homework on this, I guess, but when it pertains to like college and fraternities and stuff like that, how's that work inside the B two?
In what respect, sir?
As far as, that wouldn't be any sales inside those areas, right?
For these districts, be one, B two, B three. These would be permitted uses within the districts if this particular ordinance is adopted by council with the favorable recommendation from P and Z. So again, to, similar to what Mr. King was speaking of, TABC will still issue the license to the persons that would sell or convey the alcohol.
Okay.
We are just trying to limit or expand the permitted uses into these districts, whereas not exclusive to those previously mentioned uses of grocery stores.
So it's not a whole set, we're not throwing up in the doors and saying, y'all can sell alcohol. It's, it's regulated by the state.
Regulated by TABC, yes ma'am. This is just to allow them to sell in certain districts.
Okay.
Where right now they-
And exclusively in those districts.
Uh, yes.
In other words, it can't be sold outside, no alcohol sales outside of these permitted zoning.
It's be limited to these districts.
Okay.
There's also an ordinance in place that's included in your packet that speaks of proximity to churches and schools, and that's, that will remain in place as well.
That will remain in effect?
That will remain in effect. And so there will be additional limitations on where within a district can someone have an operation, a business operation like this, still having to meet those requirements of the distant, minimum distances.
Okay. Any other questions?
I make a motion, we pass it.
Do we need to open this to a public hearing?
No, yes.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and open this to a public hearing. Is anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this change to the zoning regulation? Is there anybody here who wishes to speak against?
I would like to.
Okay, please sir, come to the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Jim Kirby. I live at one twenty, twelve thirty-four County Road four seven four in Eureth County. If I go ahead and-
Thank you, go ahead.
Proceed. Yeah, I would, I'd like to oppose this because of, I just think we don't need any more availability than we already have. It's been quite a long time since I've addressed this, but I know, I've been thinking, it's probably been thirty years ago that we were, it seemed like we were here at planning and zoning and city council multiple times. I know I've spoken many, many times, and I understand that since then, the, the state law has changed that the council doesn't need two-thirds majority to overturn whatever ruling you make. Is that correct? So that really puts the onus on the decision that you made. You're making even a stronger decision than what you would have in the past. I know big cities have this. I came to Stevieville, I didn't want to live in a big city, and you know, I realize it's available, but I just would like to, for us not to make it more available than it is. I served on the grand jury back in the mid nineties, and we heard case after case after case with felony DWI, and looking at all those prior convictions and all of that, and seeing all of the problems that went into that, and I'm concerned about that. My kids are out of the home now, don't have any kids left, but my youngest will be thirty next week, so it's not about kids being here, but I do think we have a responsibility to that younger generation that is coming up. My family has been personally affected by alcohol. I realize this is not necessarily an alcohol issue. My brother had a father-in-law who was a Texas Ranger. This was a pretty elite position. He was killed by a drunk driver on the interstate highway driving the wrong way. My brother got involved with it. He got sclerosis of the liver, died of liver cancer last year. So I am personally affected by that, and I do believe it's in the genes. I think you have to trigger it to, to take it. I know this is not a, a drinking issue, but I just think we should make it less available. I know with these situations, there's more traffic, there's a bigger strain on our law enforcement, and you know, right now, we need to support our law enforcement more than ever before, and I think it would be very difficult for them. But I'd just like to urge your support to give us a very careful decision. I mentioned being on the grand jury. I can remember there were times we were on the grand jury as we were looking at the indictment, we're thinking, yeah, this is pretty close, let's let the trial jury decide it. Yeah, that probably wasn't the right way to do that, and, and maybe planning and zoning commissions in the past could have thought, you know, they gotta have a pretty strong majority to overturn this, but that isn't the case anymore, so what y'all decide is probably gonna go through. So I would like to really urge that you vote against that, and while I live out of the county, I spend a lot of time in the county. I'm a retired math professor from Tarleton. I've been in Stevieville for almost forty years. This is my home, I've watched it grow a lot, I've watched it get closer to that big city. But anyway, thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else wish to speak against this?
Madam Chair, may I speak as a council member?
Yes sir, please do.
Speak as a resident.
I am a resident and a council member, a business owner. I'm gonna tell you lifelong resident, I'm not gonna tell you how long, but lifelong, Alan Nix, one one three Ben Hogan, Stevieville. What Mr. Kirby said is exactly right. Y'all wield a tremendous amount of influence by your decision tonight. And if you stop and think about those, the change that's proposed to the zoning ordinance, it is very specific, but that's all of the business zoning in the city of Stevieville, B one, B two, B three, and the downtown business district. That's all of the business zoning. It's not exclusive, and it's, it does not limit what can go, with the exception of the proximity to schools and churches and things like that. But it is far-reaching. It is a tremendous change to the city that we live in. I urge you to use caution. And I would prefer that you not approve it, because when it goes to council with a negative voice from you, that does carry some weight. But at the same time, the, the main reason that I think it's not appropriate for the city of Stevieville is, again, as Mr. Kirby said, I don't want Stevieville to be like Dallas or Fort Worth, or some of those big cities that have the crime, the trash, the other problems that they bring with some of these things. And, and we've seen an increase in some of that since we went partially with. I think we have enough availability. I don't think putting a drive-through beer barn or other facilities in other areas around town, and that's what you're opening the door to do if you pass this. And I don't, I don't want that for Stevieville. I don't think it's best for the community. If we're not careful, we're gonna trade something that we may think is progress for something that's actually not gonna be good for the city, especially in the long run. But even in the short run, it may not be good for the city. I appreciate y'all's work. I, I fail to tell you that as often as I should. I know you dedicate a lot of time, a lot of thought, a lot of effort into the decisions and the service that you give. I would vote to double your salary tonight if I had the authority to do that. But that, that's not within my control. But I appreciate your service, I appreciate your help, I appreciate the fact that you're looking at this. I just urge you to use caution and be extremely conscious of the far-reaching impact and ramifications of what your decision tonight may have on, on the business community, but on the overall community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak against this change in zoning regulations?
Would it be possible for me to add something or to extend my time?
You used your full three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion and a second so we can discuss.
I'll make a motion that it be approved, or that we recommend approval minus the neighborhood business district, only the commercial district and downtown.
So if you second that, you're in agreement?
I'm gonna second that.
Okay.
I mean, that, that would have been my question, is can we, can we approve some of these, some of the businesses, but not all of them? Because-
We can recommend to council.
Recommend whatever.
We can recommend to council.
So then I'll second that.
Okay.
So we can discuss.
All right.
Oh, I guess I can discuss now. So I, just looking through the list, and maybe it's because it's named the neighborhood business district, that B one really kind of concerns me. A lot of what's, what's listed there in that B one is you've got your churches, your clinics, your convalescent homes, your daycare centers, private kindergarten, public parks. These are all, you know, children play in these areas. These, these are areas where maybe you don't want to just blanket okay, the sale of alcohol. These are also kind of the buffers, these are intended to be buffer zones between our, what, what is seen as traditional commercial business versus a residential neighborhood. And I think if we're going to properly protect those areas, that, that it makes sense to exclude the B ones from, from, from this blanket approval of alcohol sales. As to the other districts, I don't see why they, they wouldn't be included. And then, and the same goes for the downtown area. It is largely commercial, and, and I would approve the, I think it would, it makes sense to include that downtown area as well. Are we on the same page?
We are.
Okay.
Does anybody have any arguments the other way?
Yeah, I don't think we should do it at all. I think this is a very blanket statement that just says a beer barn like Alan pointed out, or a liquor, because this, this is what this is about. They can call it wine, because that's, that's hiding it. This is about the liquor thing that's gonna be coming up in November, and we're gonna be voting on it. There's gonna be liquor stores wherever we put, wherever we approve the alcohol sales is a liquor store. And you can potentially put that anywhere and everywhere, including a beer barn. Right now, the county can put all the beer barns they want out there, they can go everywhere they want, but a liquor or beer store, or liquor or beer barn inside the buildings? I'm not interested in it at all. And so when you're Blake and put it in this, it gets, we can all say, oh, what about somebody wants to do a wine bar? What was, what was this wine thing? No, it can also be Everclear on the shelf, sitting there with strobing lights. So if this is a blanket one, we can knock this down a whole lot and say, hey, in B two, you can put a liquor store, and it has to be defined by this, and this, and this. That's not this approach. This is a shotgun approach to anywhere that there's a piece of property that's in these zones, you can put a liquor store. And so I'm against that completely. We have all these other uses, we can break out liquor store just as easily, we can break out beer barns, we can break out primary use of wine sales. So I'm against it completely, this great blanket shotgun approach in any zone. So that's my, that's my take.
And I'm the same way. It's the blanket approach, we're gonna have alcohol on every corner, potentially. You've got college kids that have nowhere else to go, and they're gonna be hitting those stores, getting drunk, rickety in town, getting on campus. I mean, it, there's too many variables, and this is gonna be a can of worms if we open it. It's best to let it just be the way it's been.
Nick, do you have any thoughts?
The only thing I would add is the, the fact that TABC ultimately has the oversight, just throwing that out there. I mean, you, you can't put a liquor store next to a school, you can't put a liquor store next to a church. TABC has the ultimate oversight.
But it's, it still can go into other places.
TABC only has the oversight if it's zoned properly. If it's not zoned properly, they can't put liquor there, period. That's the first thing they ask on the request, is it zoned properly? So the city, that's how they told, hold on to their local control. So that is, that's, this whole TABC makes the decision. No, they don't. All they do is say, is this zoned properly? Yes, that box is checked, they can put it wherever they want.
So by a school?
If, well, that's the only limitation. But if they, they wanna put it, if they wanna put it right next to City Hall, they can, and put it right there. So it's not, the TABC makes the decision, the city's actually making the decision based off their zoning request. That's why we only have three or four zones, but you know, Metroplex, they have overlay after overlay, and they have nine hundred and ninety-seven, and they say that's only gonna be this thing, and we're putting it here. So that's what we're allowing, is just this whole blanket approach. So TABC's just, they're just making sure that it meets the legal requirements of that local jurisdiction. That's all they're doing.
So Todd, what, do you have a vision of a different way to do this? Or do you just think, think it should not be done at all?
Well, yeah, I, I think you can, if we're gonna do it, I think you put limits, just like all these other limits in here, and says, this is, we define, we make definitions, that's what the zoning code's for, and you define what a liquor store is, and you say that liquor store cannot go here, here, and here. It can only be in B twos, and it can only be, we can make B two nine 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 if we so desired, this liquor stores, and we can zone every single one that comes up that way if we so desire. I'm not saying we do that, I'm just saying that's the options. We do it a different approach here where we just list infinity, which I've always thought is gets us into trouble, because then neighbors don't know what that property can actually be. And develop, even when a developer comes and says, this is my plan, if that plan doesn't work out, you sell it, it turns into a junkyard. So you gotta be very careful. So that's what zoning's here, and I say it every time, I sound like my good friend Malcolm Cross. People live in the city because of, zoning protects property values. That is why they live in the cities. It's not, people not live in Stevieville so that they choose to hear, to live here because the zones and the way that we built the city. They don't choose to live here so we can say, oh, all of a sudden, beer and wine can be everywhere. I would say most citizens are not for this. That's my take, but that's just my take. Because it can go in the county right now. I mean, when it, when it passes, they can go in the county and do whatever they want. It's not like they can't be here. We're saying we want it in Stevieville. I don't think I want it in Stevieville. I don't want liquor stores in Stevieville. I understand when it passes, it can be two miles off the road, that's different conversation, I can't control that, that's a county vote. But I live here now, so.
And aren't we gonna be revisiting all this zoning in a workshop sometime in the future?
Comprehensive plan?
All comprehensive.
Yes, sir.
We can readdress it there, instead of doing the shotgun approach.
Can I ask what the intent was for the change, for the blanket change versus reaching a case-by-case or, or making changes on a case-by-case basis? Are you, are you finding that you have a, are, is the council finding that they have an influx of these kind of, or kind of requests for the specific zoning so that they, they can sell alcohol? Or are we, are we finding that we're turning away businesses because we're not, we don't currently have this?
I believe, ma'am, I can't say that the two cases that I'm aware of are an influx by any means, however, we do know that this is an issue that will be coming up on future ballots, and so I think we're wanting to be ahead of the curve on that, knowing that there will probably be additional applications coming to the city based on the outcome of that particular election. So if it were to pass, then we, we have it to where we, we cannot accommodate those requests for those businesses if it were to pass. And so I believe it was just a proactive measure to try to give us the tools to move forward in the event that it is on the ballot and passes.
But there was no conversation to create a new B two point four, like we just did last month and created commercial zone or residential zone, whatever it was, one point, two point five.
Commissioners, this was a request from a couple of council members to take a look at this specifically in this manner, and at least start the discussion and present it up. So that's what we asked staff to do, and that's where we're at.
Okay. Jason, can I ask you a question? I've noticed here in B two and B three zoning, we have microbreweries a lot. Are those microbrew- Are those microbreweries allowed on-premises sales?
Well, every sale would be on-premise, you'd be-
No, I mean, can, can you consume? Can you consume the beverage on-premises? Because that's the, that's the draw of most microbreweries.
I'd have to look at what the T A B C regs on a microbrewery is. My guess is they're probably on-premise consumption places.
So we, we already allow alcohol sales in B two and B three, as long as they make it fair?
As a microbrewery.
For, for a certain, but a microbrewery is its own thing, it's a very specialized.
I, I realize that. But a brewery is alcohol. I mean, that's what they're brewing. They're brewing alcoholic beverages, so you have alcoholic beverages for sale already allowed in B two and B three.
What we do with restaurants.
You have it at Walmart, restaurants, those are all B two.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
H U B.
That's not the argument.
But, but what he's asking is, are those breweries also allowed to then sell, this is, I think what you're getting at, is are, are they also allowed to sell alcohol to take home, to consume in your home, and not just consume on premises? So, so you, so you get a, you get a sample, and you're like, I like this, I'm going to take a six-pack home. Is that an option?
Without looking at what T A B C specific statute regulates microbreweries, I don't know if they would be on and off. Usually, especially in a county like ours, you're, you're one or the other.
Okay.
And usually, if you're on, then there's the private club aspect of it because of us being a dry county. I don't know that we have any places that I would describe as licenses for both, on-premise consumption and off-premise sales.
In the city? No. But in the county, I believe Lucky Mines, you can consume on-premises.
Well, and then, and guys, you've got to remember, there were some changes to state law as well that allowed alcohol to go.
Also true, yes.
It also kind of changed. So some of those rules, even at the state level, have been in flux here lately, and I'm, I'm not sure if they entirely know where they come down on some of that either right now.
The point is, Bruce, as you pointed, as, as Stephen pointed out earlier, it, right now, those alcohol sales are attached to another item.
Are what?
Attached to another sa, item, business. You, you can't just sell liquor, you can't just sell beer, there's really, it's, it's inside a convenience store. The convenience store is the business that has alcohol.
Okay.
Okay, this wouldn't be that way. This would be an alcohol store.
I would assume a microbrewery is an alcohol store. I mean, they're brewing it on premises.
But those are typically-
Granted.
But those are typically also associated with cer, like a bar, that you can also purchase for consumption on-site. I, I'm not aware of any microbreweries that don't also sell on-site.
Specific use within the district.
Okay.
Right.
So because it, I think where we, maybe I can help. The microbrewery in that district is a specifically stated permitted use within that district. And what we're, and because it's specifically stated at the microbrewery, at their grocery store, it makes that mutually exclusive to everything else. So I can't have, since it states specifically what uses are allowed in B two for alcohol sales, if it's not specifically stated, then it's not, it's not a permitted use. And what we're trying to do here is make the permitted use more applicable to the district and not necessarily to those four uses.
Well, I, I stand, I stand by my motion.
All right. Do you guys feel ready to vote?
What was the motion again, please, I'm sorry?
Bruce, the, the motion was-
That, that the motion, that the request be approved minus B one zoning.
No, yeah, neighborhood business, yeah. Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and do this as a roll call, because I think it's, it'll be a little sticky. We're gonna, we're gonna start with you, Tom. Are you in favor, in favor of recommending to council that these zoning regulations are changed to allow for the sale of alcohol with the exception of neighborhood business? Are you in favor?
No.
No. Bruce?
Yes.
Yeah. Mary?
I'm going to change my mind, I'm going to go no.
No.
Let me, let me ask, okay, this is a motion.
Wait, yeah, we have to finish the vote before we, okay, so no.
I'm gonna say yes.
No.
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 All right, so the noes have it, that motion fails. So that's it, it goes to council with a, with a negative recommendation. So that's where it's, correct? We cannot make another motion?
Can we make another motion?
Because that motion failed. Can we make another yes?
We could make a motion to reconsider, I guess.
We could make a, that motion failed, so shouldn't we be able to make another motion, correct?
I don't, I don't think so.
We voted on it, and that's it? And that's it?
And we're, and we're voting on a recommendation, not a-
Right, so it's going to move to city council. It's going to go to city council with a negative recommendation, and they'll do with it what they will.
I mean, my only question on that is, if we have things that come up in discussion, you would have to make an amendment to the discussion, to the, during that motion. You get one shot at it, at this level.
Yeah, and then we could make an amendment after.
It seems odd.
Yeah, and counterproductive, but-
Because in council priors, we, you'd let something die on purpose so that you can bring it back up to vote another way.
Yeah.
With amendments.
I think maybe on this, we could make a secondary motion to, to make another amendment.
Because this isn't part of a zoning case, it's more of something as a request from council.
All right. Does anybody have another motion they would like to? We need a motion, and then we can discuss it.
I'd like to move to approve the, this change for the downtown area solely.
Only for the downtown?
Only for the downtown.
Okay, is there, so the recommendation is to recommend the council approving this only for the downtown area. Is there a second? All right, then that motion will die without a second.
I'd like to discuss a little bit.
Okay, we have to have a motion to discuss.
We do.
Yep.
So I'd like to re, restate my motion to approve-
Well, it fails, so start a new motion.
Okay, I'd like to move that we approve zoning, the zoning change for the downtown area only, and will entertain any kind of conversation we'd like to have about it, if I get a second.
So that's essentially saying the same thing?
Yeah. The same motion, that'd already died for lack of a second.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
But we can't discuss this unless there's a second.